All right. Welcome to the December regular meeting of the Board of Education. Joy, would you like to do the role?
Ms. Whitcliff?
Here.
Mr. Boyd?
Here.
Mr. Beveridge?
Here.
Mr. McKeon?
Here.
Ms. Schultz? Ms. Velter? Mr. Gary?
Here.
All right. And then will you all rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Before we begin our public comments, I just wanted to share a quick thought. So in the last few days, the board has received several emails from parents upset that our middle and high school students have moved to remote learning. Let me say this publicly and unequivocally: no one on the Board of Education wanted to make this move, not one. This move was made for one simple reason: the community's spread of the coronavirus is too high. Because of this, and associated cases and quarantines, we do not have teachers, staff, and substitute teachers to open buildings. We can't open schools without teachers. And this is the reality that all school districts in Johnson County are living with when the community has allowed cases per 100,000 to go from 250 in late October to over 800 in late November. Olathe, Blue Valley, Shawnee Mission, De Soto, Spring Hill, and Gardner are all living with this reality. That's 42 publicly elected volunteers, seven from each district, and six superintendents, all looking at the reality and being forced to move back to remote learning. I would ask that you give the elected officials and school district staff and employees some grace. We are in a once, in a lifetime, once in a century global pandemic. Almost 3,000 people died yesterday. There is no playbook. We are all working overtime and doing the best we can to make the right decision. So thank you for that. Now I'll let Mr. Gary read our public comment.
At each regular meeting, the Board of Education reserves limited time for individuals wishing to address the board. Individuals addressing the board should come to the podium at the front of the room and state your name. Tonight, we request that individual speakers limit their comments to three minutes. A staff person will monitor the time and notify the speaker when the three-minute time limit has expired. Please direct your comments to the entire board, and if response is appropriate, the president will respond or refer to another individual. In an effort to respect privacy, we ask that speakers refrain from discussing personal complaints involving individual staff members or students. Those speaking are advised that public comments are videotaped recorded for broadcast on the district's educational access channel and audio recorded as a matter of public record. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gary. Our first speaker is Alicia Morris.
Hello. My name is Alicia Morris, and I am a theater teacher in the district. I just wanted to speak today about some of my experiences with virtual learning versus hybrid learning. It was awesome to see the kids in person during hybrid. They were full of life and energy and were happy to be at school. And I remember walking down the hallway after class one day and thinking like, wow, this actually feels kind of normal. And then it occurred to me that feeling normal could be detrimental to the mitigation of the spread. If things feel normal, then people will start letting their guard down and will be less careful, and I think that's exactly what happened. I'd also say around week four of hybrid learning, I noticed kids getting sloppy. I was reminding kids to wear their masks fully over their nose way more on week four than I ever had to during week one. The energy and excitement of being at school had worn off, and now they were just tired of wearing masks, doing thousands of homework, and sitting still in every single class. Many students told me that their grades got worse when they went to hybrid learning. Very few of my students used the half-day-out-of-school lifestyle. Many hung out with friends or picked up extra shifts at work, and I saw a massive increase of missing assignments in my grade book. I also experienced issues with students constantly in and out of quarantine. When we were virtual, I had the best attendance and least amount of zeros in the grade book than I've ever had. Virtual learning also allowed for me to see all of my students face-to-face at once. We weren't worrying about masks or getting too close or staying in our seats. We actually had a chance to build a community together. It's really hard to be a fun and engaging teacher in a hybrid setting when you can't get close to the kids. They all have to be sitting in assigned seats socially distanced and facing the board. Teaching hybrid is exhausting. We are in a constant state of anxiety. We're repeating lessons multiple times a day. We're gathering materials to send the unending list of quarantined kids' homework. We're pushing kids immediately out the door so we can sanitize the room. We're skipping lunch to wipe down tables and doorknobs, and we're googling how to find a job after leaving a teaching career and seriously considering doing it. I hear a lot of arguments about kids needing to be in schools because they're worried about student mental health, but no one seems to be talking about teachers and staff mental health. It makes us feel expendable and like our lives aren't worth saving, and I need you to know that we are not okay. I come here today to suggest three things that would really help teachers right now. Number one, more communication from the district. Number two, more attempts to hear every teacher's voice. And number three, a commitment to full virtual learning for the beginning of second semester so that teachers can feel safer entering the classroom after the community will inevitably spend winter break traveling and visiting with people outside of their household. Thank you so much for your consideration and your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Brian Connell.
I'm Brian Connell. I have two kids in the school. Some of you all may recognize me. I'm bringing this because this is one of the few areas in which people can come together in the same place, and if one of you all needs, it can save your life. Right now, you're not doing so. You're not supporting those who need their families in the stands. I've said a lot of things to a lot of people over the last three or four months. Honestly, I don't really think everyone's listening. I think you're hearing, but I don't think you're listening. So I'm going to take the time to read you something I posted online, and I hope it'll mean something to you. Separating us. They're separating us from our kids and our family members. No fans in the stands, and no visitors in the hospitals, and no one's on the deathbed as your grandmother died. They separate us from our schools and our classrooms, and they say, "Remote learning is good, but no kids in the schools." They separate us from our neighbors, lockdowns, masks, no graduation parties, no Thanksgiving, and now they're saying no Christmas allowed. They separated us from our communities and our towns and our local businesses. We always Amazon or DoorDash. They separated us from our churches and our faith communities, but liquor stores and Walmart are okay while churches are closed. They separated us from political leaders, Topeka, Washington DC. They seem so far away and disconnected and distant from all of us. And then our JOCO, Johnson County Commissioners, refuse to allow individuals to actually speak to them directly anymore. They separated us from our spouses. America has a 50% divorce rate. Nine out of 10 highest divorce rates in the world are socialist countries. Is that what we are? They have become greater, more numerous, and stronger than the we, but we've become so accustomed to being separated from one another such that we accept this incrementation, and we become weaker so weak we can't stand up or show up or fight back. Are our children, spouses, parents, and grandchildren not worth fighting for? Is love not worth fighting for? Is life and living not worth fighting for? When will we come together and really fight to save ourselves, our families, our friends, our schools, our communities, our state, and our country? We don't even get together for birth celebrations or funerals. They are winning, but they have not won yet. If one person stands up, maybe the next person will stand up, and the next person, and then we become a force to stem the tide of socialism. We need our schools back. We need our kids in the schools. We need our board, our administrators, our leaders to step up and say, "Children first; our communities matter." That's my appeal.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jennifer Gilmore.
Hello. This is Jennifer Gilmore. Last time I was here, I had asked you what students prepared for their future meant to each of you. Olathe is slowly becoming a place that I do not recognize. We live in a county that argues for three hours, one time, where bars should close in a pandemic, and our mayor makes a public statement, "Olathe is the best place to live, work, and play." Why is the word "learn" missing from this headline? The burden's being placed right now on families trying to juggle numerous obstacles of their own employment, all while being confronted with the teachers' union continuing to fight for less work and more pay. Does the mental health of our healthy community not matter? Does anyone care about the burdens being placed on families by adding more days of in-home learning that are not equipped as well as our million-dollar schools? I care deeply about the quality of my child's education, but I also have a job that I enjoy and work hard to get. Every person that steps up to this podium tonight cares about school personnel. They are essential to us. If I did not believe that, I would have pulled her and homeschooled. Why is our community no longer valuing human interaction and hands-on learning? If remote learning was proven to work, wouldn't students be taking finals? What do overall grades look like right now in our district? Why is it safe for me to be in a room full of adults, but not safe for one adult to be in a classroom of kids? Where is the parent-teacher coalition so we can work together in ideas? The district purchased how much Plexiglas? Is it being used? They purchased 5,000 face shields. Why are you not mandating those? Have you updated your quarantine time for new CDC release? Why are we not attempting to use school buildings at some capacity? Let seniors be in the high school building so they can have some normalcy. How about middle school? Keep just sixth grade in there. It's a transition from elementary. Wait, staff shortage. Why are we not hosting a career fair to make it easier for subs and teachers to apply quickly? What about watchdog dads? Why are we not vetting this program to get more help in buildings that are understaffed at no cost to the district? Could we bypass offering some electives right now, like PE, and place those teachers in classrooms with shortages for core subjects? Doesn't it make more sense to have trained staff in a classroom than me subbing for a rainy day? How about letting teachers that don't want to be here out of their contracts, free of penalty? If virtual school has a solid market, there will be jobs for them, and Johnson County has the highest teaching salaries in the state. It's time to start fighting for how we get kids in school buildings and keep them there if we want to faithfully prepare these kids for their futures. We are in a pandemic, but we don't have to lose our way and forever lose the value of the word "learning" here in Olathe. Olathe is the best place to live, learn, work, and play, but we need your leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Karen Rawlings.
Hi. My name is Karen Rawlings, and thank you for continuing to let us speak to you guys in person. As student advocates, we continue to ask for you to focus your time and attention on the needs of students across the district. We are saddened to see that politics continue to influence decisions made about our children's education and welfare. I will continue to remind everyone that schools were not created to meet the employment needs and wishes of teachers and staff. The Educational Systems Foundation is based on educating kids and helping them grow into the most productive human beings that they can be. The decisions being made by the district do not contribute to this goal at this time. The remote learning environment is not working. It is not fine, as some would like to tell you. I can attest to this personally with my own kids in the system. This also applies to the chaotic schedules teachers must manage right now. Your decisions continue to upend family units and cause irreparable damage in some cases. Everyone has had time this semester to review the science. We are not spreading COVID at schools, and the CDC has strongly recommended reopening schools. Now that the ONEA can't follow on science to meet their remote learning agenda, staffing shortages are an excuse to keep us shut down. The reality is that staffing has been fittingly mismanaged, including inefficient management of substitute applications and instituting overbearing teacher quarantine processes. Additionally, if we were back in the classroom full-time, one could argue that spikes in early retirement and leaves of absences might decline a little, as the mental health of teachers would be more stable. New teachers would also be encouraged to join a workforce if they knew they had a stable environment. Stop waiting on everyone else and being reactive. Be proactive now, today, this week, this month. Process all the applications for substitutes quickly with added temporary staff. Hire a recruiting company to get more of those applicants. We have money and resources to address the staffing shortages. Use it to get kids back in school in January and not for council to negotiate terms with employees who don't want to be at work in the first place. Please stop punishing the students and teachers by keeping them away from the classroom full-time. This has long-term damaging effects toward society's future as well as to yours. If the wellness of the society at large is your goal, then getting kids and teachers back in school should be your first priority, and this is the safest and most productive place for them to be. Please start listening to your constituents, and please stop spitting every action that we question. We have been very patient with you. We have done everything you have asked, and the students', and we have proven that in-person learning has worked safely for everyone. We expect all of our students to be back in the classroom full-time in January. Thank you very much for your continued time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Nick Cradley.
Hello. My comments tonight are in service to a push for the board reaffirming its commitment to the Health Department's gating criteria and providing professional discretion to teachers who would choose to limit the spread of the virus by working from home. I would also encourage you, as we have these discussions, to remember we would love to be teaching in person, but the federal and state governments have declined to provide financial relief necessary to close nonessential businesses, and the local government made the preposterous decision to leave restaurants, bars, and gyms open. The cost of that is schools. Tonight, you are being reminded of the impact of mental health on this community. What of the trauma inflicted by the death of loved ones from a tragedy that was preventable? What of the 20% of COVID survivors who report new mental health comorbidities? What of the mental health of teachers who go to work every day not knowing whether or not today could be the day they acquire the virus and become one of the 200,000 more people expected to die before the pandemic is over? Are we concerned with the mental health of our classified staff who, without the financial undergirding the rest of us benefit from, could see life-altering costs from their exposure to this virus? However, because this crisis has laid bare Americans' preoccupation with their own lives rather than the lives of others, I will focus on the mental health of you, the Board of Education, and the expert district administration empowered to guide our schools. I have been reflecting on my experiences in times of crisis, and I am going back to my freshman year of high school when the September 11 attacks robbed us of 2,977 Americans. As of today, our single-day death toll from COVID has surpassed that. Nineteen years after 2,977 Americans were killed, millions of people ignored the CDC guidance and boarded airplanes to visit their loved ones for Thanksgiving, and in the process, had to go through extensive security checkpoints and digital scans. Nineteen years from today, what will we be left with from this crisis with that same death toll being repeated daily? With that question in mind, I ask what of your mental health? What do we do here has downstream effects in our community as our hospitals approach capacity? How will you cope, knowing that there will be children who bring the virus home to loved ones, or teachers who may get sick and piss hospitals too full to take them? What of the Black and Latino citizens of Olathe who die at three times the rate of their white counterparts? How will you all sleep at night, knowing that you have the power to prevent this? When you are thinking about mental health tonight, consider your own trauma, because you have a choice here, and you will bear the burden of responsibility.
Thank you. Next up is Gretchen Howard.
Hello, members of the board. My name is Gretchen Howard. I have been a student in the Olathe School since kindergarten, and I am currently a senior at Olathe South. I am here because I know I would regret it if I did not speak my mind about something that is so important to me. As teachers have unions to advocate for them, as students are forced to advocate for ourselves, and our voices have proven to be less powerful. During the week, you can find me serving food and drink to doctors, construction workers, and even teachers. But where you will definitely not find me is at Olathe South, getting an education. Every day, I watch as my friends and neighbors head to their private schools to get a real education. These private schools have had no major issues and will remain fully open for the rest of the semester while I am confined to my computer screen. They sit in their classrooms sharing thoughts and ideas with teachers and students while I sit at my kitchen table feeling isolated. Ever since March, the slogan has been, "Listen to the science," and I am always in favor of science. Science does not support remote learning. Dr. Fauci himself said, "Close the bars and keep the schools open," while the director of the CDC took the position that the risk of closing K through 12 schools outweighs the risk of keeping them open. I am here today not as a student who uses school only as a social outlet, which is what many adults believe, but as a student who works her butt off every single day to learn more. As I approach my final stretch in the Olathe Schools, I feel abandoned by the district who wrote in their own handbook that regular attendance directly affects academic achievement. My academic achievement is being affected. Online school is not real attendance, and anyone who says so is not being honest with themselves. I said I wanted to speak my mind, a mind that the Olathe Schools has challenged me to use throughout my academic career. Please don't let the schools become a place where good enough becomes a standard. Kids need to be in school. It has been 266 days since I last attended a full day of school at Olathe South High School. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Jonathan Eschner.
Hi. I'm Jonathan Eschner. In my family, family stories are often a staple of family gatherings at holidays. One family-featured story is often of groceries being left on a porch where family members are quarantined inside due to a family illness, in which they are then left alone to fight it on their own. Another family story that took place that was told to me as a child was during the 1918 flu pandemic on a family farm not far from Fort Riley, Kansas. Never in my wildest dreams would I expect for this to happen to my family once again. Over the Thanksgiving holiday, my family gathered from various regions of the state of Kansas. During that family gathering, while I was socially distanced, wearing a mask outside by a fire pit, my father became ill and the very next day was diagnosed with COVID-19. This diagnosis impacts all of the families that were in attendance or those that were in attendance, young and old. This is the second time that someone in my family has had to battle COVID-19, with one of them requiring a week's stay in the hospital. I don't share these stories for sympathy, but to provide context of this pandemic's impact on this individual human being that happens to be a teacher in the Olathe Public Schools. This pandemic and the challenges associated with it have called our nation to have shared sacrifices that often cuts unevenly in our own individual lives. The burden I've been struggling with is balancing the demands of teaching while acknowledging that I am only a human. As the pandemic storm intensifies, with rising community members becoming ill with COVID-19 and the already strained health systems in our community, my social connections are at the end of a screen or within six feet of distance from work. I appreciate the great staff at my building for all that they have done to help support me during this time period. The burden that is facing you as a Board of Education is heavy and with many unseen challenges and opportunities. You are the seven individuals vested as caretakers of our schools and our students and staff that work and attend those schools within our community. As we move forward into what public health experts call a long cold winter, and the pandemic ravages our community and individual families, I ask that your decisions are based on public health and science that prioritizes human lives. I will keep doing my part, the best to my ability, so that I can be there for my students as we approach a dark winter since 1918. My name is Jonathan Eschner, and I am but one human that is part of this solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jody Shroba.
Hello. I was worried I wasn't going to be seen over the podium. I have a little height challenge. My name is Jody Shroba. I am a parent of two sixth-grade middle school students. I am also a pediatric nurse practitioner that practices in this community. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak. I also want to thank the students and teachers at Mission Trail. They are doing an amazing job. I know that those teachers are tired, exhausted, and they always have a smile on their face. Like other parents tonight, I am here requesting that the district return us to in-person learning. While my children are maintaining their grades, they are struggling. This is their first year in middle school, which is a difficult transition anyway. And then you put in this COVID situation. In other districts, they would be in elementary school. They would be going to school every single day, getting in-person learning. And instead, they're doing virtual. They were not ready, and they were not prepared as an 11-year-old to be teaching themselves. We are four months into the school year, and this is what we know: remote doesn't work. Hybrid was better than we expected. Kids are not transmitters, and that they are falling behind, and they are also being damaged socially and emotionally. Mitigation strategies work. The teachers are not getting sick from the students. If you look at the numbers for Mission Trail prior to Thanksgiving, there were eight positive kids, one positive teacher. Total positivity rate: 1%. They are safer in school. The teachers are safer in school than they are in the community. Kids are not being hospitalized for COVID, but they are being hospitalized for mental health and suicide attempts. It's frustrating as a parent. I can't send my kid to school, but I can go to a bar. What is wrong with our society that we feel that our personal entertainment is more important than the education of our children? Private schools have been in this entire time. Why can't we figure this out? Stop making decisions out of fear and intimidation. Follow the science. Follow the data. Schools are safe. Open us back up. It is time for Olathe to stand up and be the leader that we know that we are. How are we going to do this? The CDC just shortened the quarantine time. Seven days with a test. Get the teachers back into school. Start testing the teachers. Let them have access to COVID testing. And lastly, advocate for the teachers to be in the first phase of the COVID vaccination. That vaccine is coming. Let them get it. I know that you've been put in a very difficult situation. You were forced into remote learning due to the holidays and the community activity, and I understand. But it's now time to shift the focus back to our kids. In closing, I would like to say this to the Olathe community: it is time to stop making a public health crisis a political argument. The preamble of the Constitution starts by saying, "We, the people, not I, the person. We must all contribute to end this pandemic so that we can give our kids the education that they need and they deserve." Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Brett McFaul.
Board, it's good to see you at our monthly get-together again. Brett McFaul, father of six. I have six daughters, eighth grader, sixth grader, fourth grader, first grader, five-year-old, and a one-year-old. I got my property tax bill in the mail the other day. It went up to $4,100, which is fine, because I looked at the property tax bill. $2,100 went to USD 233, which also I'm completely fine with, but not for my kids to do remote learning. $21 of my $4,100 from the property tax went to Olathe School District for my kids to sit in their rooms and stare at a screen. Why are my kids locked in their room? Because we have a five and a one-year-old running around. The other two are in elementary school, having a blast every day. The other two are locked in their rooms, doing online school. Let's go back to this summer when we got a survey in the mail that said, "Would you rather do remote or in-person?" And over 80% of Olathe parents said in-person. But that was thrown out the window, and then the excuse was made, "Schools aren't safe due to COVID." That was an excuse to keep our kids out of school. Now, I know we didn't know everything about it, but we've learned. And now the second excuse has come, and it's not COVID anymore, it's substitute teachers. I'm a teacher. I've taught for 16 years. I teach remote every day. It is not good. I can't establish relationships with my kids. I don't know what's going on outside of the school with any of them. I'm lucky if they even turn on their screen and show me their face. How am I, as a teacher, supposed to reach these young high school men and women, boys and girls? But now we're told we got not enough substitutes. What's it going to be in January? Not enough bus drivers? I mean, seriously? According to your latest dashboard, before we went to Thanksgiving, you went for According to your latest dashboard, before we went to Thanksgiving, you went from November 7th to November 20th. Over your two-week dashboard, we have 949 teachers in the middle school, 11 confirmed cases. That's 1.16% of teachers that tested positive. 62 were in exclusion. That's 6%. We have 1,200 high school teachers, eight, eight tested positive. 65 on staff inclusion. These are your guys' stats that come out every two weeks, and that was right before we went through remote. I'm just afraid that January's going to come along, and there's going to be another excuse, and then February, and my kids have lost a year. They deserve better. We, as teachers, we need to be with our students. My daughters, they need to be with their teachers. They need that interaction. We've seen it falling apart on the mental part. It's hurting families. There's no other way to say it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Adam Carsten.
Good evening. My name is Adam Carsten. I'm coming to you first as an educator and a parent. So many people will tell you statistics, but I'm going to tell you things that I've seen with my eyes in both rolls. As a special educator during most Zooms, I observed kids were crying and/or shut off their computers. Their problems ranged from poor Wi-Fi, no quiet place in the house, and most importantly, no emotional support that can only be given from face-to-face contact. When kids were able to come into school, the first thing I did was give them a big old air hug. After the air hug, I told them not to mess around with their masks because if somebody sees them without a mask on properly, they may not be allowed back at school. I've never had one problem with any of my students wearing masks because, in their words, "I do not want to do school at home." As a parent, my daughter is a senior, and my son is a seventh grader. My senior daughter has a 4.2 GPA and loves school. She wanted to make sure. I told everyone, "All of her teachers are doing a great job," and she sees just how much extra work they are doing. After hearing that this year was going to be fully or partially online, she decided to forego the second semester and graduate early. This also includes her opportunity to play softball her senior year, which has always been a goal for her. She really misses everything else as well: school dances, basketball and football games, assemblies, and spirit weeks. In her words, "I even have a non-refundable prom dress that I'll probably never wear that I bought for last year's dance." There is no way any student could love school as much as my seventh-grade son. Last year as a sixth grader, he ran across country, and he went to every event he could attend. He went to most of the volleyball and football and basketball games, home and away. He cheered his friends on at the play, and he loved singing in the choir. He's in the yearbook seven times because each and every spirit day, he went all out. He's always loved school. Each night, while the family was sitting around the dinner table, Logan would excitedly talk about something cool that happened at school that day. As long as I remember, the only thing he has ever mentioned that he despises is baked beans. This year, a word came out of his mouth for the first time in his life: hate. During virtual learning, he said, "I hate school." As a behavioral teacher, this brought up a huge red flag. My son, who has always been happy, has been active on basketball teams and in church throughout the entire pandemic, was now showing signs of depression. In his words, "I miss being able to see people and being able to interact with them." So what would I like to see? My students in school every day. My son go to school every day. My son to play basketball, and my wife and I be able to watch him. My daughter to be able to attend a dance, cheer her teams on, and both my kids to be able to be around their friends. Personally, without me having teachers in my life that tutored me in person every year, also, if I didn't have sports, I would never have attended college. I'd still be living in my small town, doing odd jobs while not making a difference in kids' lives. I love my job, and I'll save many more lives if I can see faces in person every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Abby Sitzman.
Hello. My name is Abby Sitzman. At the beginning of the school year, I was the parent to two children in the Olathe School District, and I am currently the parent of one child in the Olathe School District. I work in finance, and data is all I do. So data is very powerful, and it can really lead leaders when they're making decisions, right? So Dr. Ellison, in a prior meeting, stated that he, along with the other superintendents of the district, had asked Johnson County Health Department for gating criteria. They needed to know when it was safe to get back in the schools, right? We didn't have school data. The only thing we had was community data. They put it together, and we can all agree, it wasn't perfect, but first iterations rarely are when it comes to data. So it did its job. It got people back into school and proved that it can be done safely. But in the absence of actual school data, it is acceptable. We're past that. We have good school data. We have 27 days of in-person education at secondary level that gives us exactly what we need to prove that we can do this safely. The data says that. There's no disputing it, right? So we need a plan. The current gating criteria is two-thirds weighted on community data. I've heard people say, "Well, schools are part of the community." Correct, but the key part is there, it's part of the community. It's not the same set of people. It's heavily weighted on the younger generation. It's all zero to 18. Zero to 18-year-olds are 27% of the population of Johnson County. Well, they're 83% of the school population, right? It's all those teachers. So it acts differently, and we need to understand that. They're part of it. It's not it. The community part of the gating criteria should not be the sole driver here. We've got two-thirds weighted on community. When you can see in the gating criteria, as it acted the last time, it, one was green and yellow, while the other one was red the whole time. I mean, they work in relationship to each other, but they are not independent. Okay, so we also need to add in the teachers in that. We have student absenteeism, but what about teacher absenteeism? We need to know when just general increases in teacher absenteeism are affecting, how they're affecting this sudden rash of people not being, teachers not being available. But good data tells you all of that. It's really easy. You just focus on it. It gives you all of the answers. This situation isn't scary anymore. It was scary when we didn't know, we had no school data. You can look at that. I can pull out anomalies. I should not see one school that has 5.6 teachers out on exclusion per positive individual in the school when everybody else is averaging 2 and 3.
Thank you. Next up is Angie Powers.
Good evening. I know you all have been carrying stories, students, parents, community members, and teachers, and I have three more to add tonight. The first story is from Sarah Griffin, an elementary teacher. I am currently expecting a baby in January, making me high-risk for COVID-19. I also have an 18-month-old at home that we're trying to keep healthy. I wanted to share my situation because I felt so unsafe in my workspace with the spread of COVID growing so rapidly. Since I need FMLA for my maternity leave, I could not take FMLA at the advice of my doctors, who are concerned about school environments. Elementary class sizes are a huge concern for me as we cannot properly spread out, rather, 20 to 25 students in our small classrooms. Art teachers like me have tables where students have to face each other at close distances because we have no other option. It's just not physically possible to put them and keep them at a safe distance. Young children's symptoms may be mild when they have COVID, but that does not lessen the chance of them spreading to the adults, who could have a difficult time fighting the illness. Community spread and school spread are going to be hand-in-hand as long as elementary students keep attending in person. The hospitals and medical workers are already overwhelmed. Let's not contribute to the problem and instead help them solve it by utilizing remote school until the spread has stopped or slowed with the upcoming vaccines. My second story is from another elementary teacher, electrically anonymous. Her family has contracted COVID-19. The health of my family has been the least part of my worries while I've been on leave. I have not had a consistent substitute teacher in my classroom. The week of 11:30, I had a different sub every day. The week before Thanksgiving, I did not have a substitute at all, and my colleagues had to rotate in and out of my room. Technology has been a huge issue. I am at a loss of what type of lessons I can provide to my students because I do not know who will be in my room and if they'll be able to use the technology, and also not being able to physically present to prep other lessons. I'm disheartened that now I will have to play catch-up when I return. But I'll be fine. But I have the same concerns about the in-person students who have to be in quarantine for any period of time. As I see more and more students who need to be on quarantine due to exposure or diagnosis itself, I know that we could do better for them. We need to be able to include those students who are at home. By not doing so, we are denying the level of education that we offer. If we can get the spread under control by going fully remote for all students, I believe we will be better educators and learners in the future. My final story is from another elementary educator, electrically anonymous. I'm a teacher mom, and I wasn't able to give my child the choice of remote learning. If I'm here, she's here. I would have loved to keep her safe at home. I am one that deals with anxiety, and although I have a baby, most of the time, the pandemic doesn't help, and walking into a petri dish of germs every day makes me very anxious. This year has been difficult for me as a teacher because the kids want it to be normal, and I need to remind them to keep a distance and wear their masks properly. We have been given, as elementary teachers, a 25-minute lunch per day, which is usually shorter than that, and then we have to figure out when to use the restroom and take care of ourselves. There are no breaks from 8 to 4. I feel strongly that those of us at the elementary level have been overlooked and invisible. Something has to change. This is not sustainable. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Nicole, and I apologize, I do not know how to pronounce that last name.
Amy. Sorry, I'm dropping. Hi, my name is Nicole Weddige. I am a parent of a junior at Olathe West High School. I'm also a licensed respiratory therapist, and I've applied to assist as a substitute teacher to do my part in supporting our amazing teaching staff. Tonight, I'm reading an excerpt of a statement from Dr. Jill Ackerman, who could not join us tonight. This was her presentation to the Kansas State Department of Education from November of 2020. My name is Jill Ackerman, Johnson County resident. I'm a family physician. I trained at Mayo Clinic and practiced medicine in Kansas City for 12 years. Per the CDC, COVID-19 survival rate is 99.997% for those aged 0 to 18. Per the American Academy of Pediatrics, severe illness due to COVID-19 is rare among children. Survival rate is 99.5% and higher for patients up to the age of 70. Private and public schools across the country and abroad have opened successfully with mitigation measures. We now have data that schools are not super-spreaders that we want to spear. A Brown University review of 227,000 students from 47 states yielded a low infection rate of 0.13% among students and only 0.24% for staffers. Similar information is available from Australia, Italy, and countries in Europe where large outbreaks like school reopening were rare. Multiple states, including Texas and New Mexico, have shown up to 40 to 70% of students in virtual learning environments had at least one failing grade. Testing data from DELLAX showed 50% of students were behind in math compared to where they were in December of last year before the lockdowns. November data released from Virginia's largest school system, Tennessee and California schools, revealed spikes in failing grades in virtual learners. Over 43,000 medical and public health scientists and physicians have voiced their concerns about damaging physical and mental health impacts of the prevailing COVID-19 policies. Lockdowns have negatively impacted diet, sleep, physical activity, and obesity rates among our children. There's been a shocking increase in the numbers of deaths of despair in our young people when compared to last year. Increased rates of suicidal ideation, depression, anxiety, and substance abuse has been well documented. In October, on October 30th, Dr. Fauci said, "Preopening schools should be the default position." He doubled down on November 29th, saying, "If you look at the data, the spread among children and from children is not really very big at all." Our cases and hospitalizations are increasing in our community. We anticipated this. Now more than ever, it's vital our community maintain aggressive mitigation strategies to protect the vulnerable, especially our aging population and those with underlying conditions. The WHO has said they do not advocate lockdowns as a primary means of control of the novel coronavirus pandemic. Our elected leaders must take all of this data into consideration, including the well-documented negative consequences of lockdowns. In addition to Dr. Ackerman's statistics, which were from November, just this week, Dr. Fauci and the CDC have reemphasized the importance of keeping schools open and have decreased the number of days recommended to quarantine. Thank you for your leadership and your service. I hope that you keep our kids best and both better.
Thank you. Next speaker is Leanne Rogers.
Good evening. I want to start first by thanking you all for being the leaders of our community. A definition of community: the people with a common interest living in a particular area broadly. The Olathe schools are part of the greater Olathe community, which shares the common interest in maintaining the excellent public education opportunities that the Olathe School District provides. Schools both contribute to the community and are impacted by the actions of the greater community. I am so very thankful for the members of the Olathe community that continue to follow the pillars of disease control. They wear a mask, they stay home when possible, they don't gather in groups, they practice hand hygiene. However, the data of both cases in quarantines related to COVID-19 in our schools shows the disease is increasing its presence in our classrooms at an exponential rate, and that is mirrored in our community. Our local experts on disease prevention and community health continue to issue warnings that we need to do more collectively to stop the spread of disease. Currently, the medical experts at Johnson County Health are recommending that all levels of education take place remotely due to the significant spread of COVID-19 in our community. We are in the red zone, not just red, but bruised red, if you look at the incidence rate, which is the primary metric used by JCPHG to determine phases. On top of that, local health officials have said that the risk of exposure during the weeks after Thanksgiving and winter break will also significantly increase for the community because of holiday gatherings. It is inconceivable to me, but predicted that soon our community won't have staffed hospital beds available. At a time when COVID-19 is spreading at an alarming rate in our community, it is time to reevaluate how the Olathe School District is choosing to educate their students at all levels. Our elementary classrooms do not meet even the minimum requirement for social distancing, alone the six-foot recommendation from the Kansas State Department of Education. As of November 27th, more elementary staff were impacted by COVID than any other level. At this time, a system-wide online learning model will provide the most consistent learning experience for Olathe students while ensuring the safety of staff and students. We have time now to begin planning for this transition before winter break. I fully understand that in-person learning is the most successful model for the majority of our students, so please understand I do not take this request lightly. The educators in our community are eager to return to in-person learning when the situation in our community makes that a safe option. Until then, the school district must take actions necessitated by the unsafe community conditions that exist at this time.
Thank you. Next up is Megan Bricks.
Good evening, board. Thank you so much for letting us have our voice tonight and speak to you. Now, never in my life did I ever expect that I would be a person who would come up and speak to you, who I am employed by through the school district. But always growing up, my music teachers and everybody I saw on worthless top high told me to use my voice. And I, this year, have used my voice as much as I can, and I'm trying to do that tonight, so please listen. December is one of the most busiest and music-filled months of the school year for any music educator across any district, any state. But this December, it's different. My music room is usually filled with the singing of holiday songs in preparation for our sing-along, but alas, this December is different. I have no singing. I have no holiday music in my classroom being sung by my own students, and that's hard for me to hear. The elementary music classrooms look different this year, but we didn't stop it from letting us enjoy the time with our students. The smiles are still underneath our students' masks, and they will never disappear when they're in our music classroom. We've all had to step outside of our comfort zones to give the best for our students and give them the best music education we can, whether that is through bucket drumming instead of a musical performance or creating choreography to holiday songs. But sometimes, it just doesn't feel like we're doing enough, and that's hard. We have days when a subposition goes unfilled, and we fill in throughout the day, whenever we have a free moment, as I did today. Or the days when we are sifting through all of our seating charts to put our student safety first. I've added on from last time, I've lost track how many there are. Educators feel a colossal weight on our shoulders to protect the students, our colleagues, some of whom are in this room along with me, ourselves, and even our own families, a burden we aren't always sure we can handle. I worry about my colleague whose baby will be born in just a few short months, and she comes to work every day nervous. I don't want her to feel that way. COVID-19 is affecting us all, and we need to do something as a district and a community. We need to put first things first: the safety of the students, the staff, and the families. I've heard from numerous educators who feel that there are inconsistencies in decisions being made and information that is being posted and shared. Inconsistencies can make a huge difference during a pandemic. The data shows us that COVID-19 is not going away. In fact- In fact, the infection rates within elementary buildings are on the rise, and if we don't make any changes, the numbers might continue to rise, and I tell you, they are there. As you make decisions, please keep all students in mind, especially those that receive services within their buildings and meet us there. I want all Alathus educators in this room and those watching at home to know that I support you and I hear you. Within my school, it's important that our students have a voice. Today, I'm here for all the voices that can't be heard. Don't just listen to the ones that were here tonight speaking to you. Please listen to all the voices. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Holly Palacio.
Hello again. Good job on my name. I would have hoped to have been here last month as Dyslexia Awareness Month. One in five in the general population is dyslexic. The only place that statistic is nearly reversed is in our prison system. Dyslexia is a language processing disorder. It is not reflective of effort or intelligence. It affects fluency. Emerging struggling readers aren't fluent in their own language and require structured cumulative curriculum taught with fidelity. I would like to have been able to be here to discuss the Kansas Legislative Task Force recommendations to implement a district-wide screener, appropriate remediation, and training of staff to support an appropriately taught structured literacy curriculum. Judging by our district's report card from the state for third-grade reading and math, we're failing. Third-grade student scores do not improve district-wide by 10th grade. Instead, we're here tonight still begging for even 50% on task classroom time called hybrid. We're supposed to be grateful for that halftime, and I will concur with one of the organized teachers' concerns, that is, lack of communication from the district. Why hasn't a team of parents, teachers, and administrators been pulled together to find solutions? Remote learning is not appropriate for the vast majority of our students. Over 75% of families, sorry, chose in-person learning all the way back in August. I would like to eliminate remote learning as an option. The Kansas Board of Ed has not decided whether or not they're going to allow it for next year, and I heartfully hope that they do not, as represented by the number of students failing one or more classes throughout our district as example, that is not a successful learning model. I'm asking you, please, to pull our district community together. You have the ability to do this. I happen to be a member of Gen X. My grandparents and our predecessors were the greatest generation. My parents were baby boomers. My cousins are millennials. My children are being called the lost generation. I am begging you to please bring us together to find solutions that they would not be labeled the lost generation. We can do this, but we have to be together and we have to be at the same table, but we have to not be a three-minute speech talking at each other and an email coming back two days later. That is not a discussion, it is not a plan, and it is not a way forward. They are relying on us and they are watching us. We can do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Anna Palacio.
Hello and good evening. My name is Anna Palacio. I'm a senior at Alathus South High School. I first would like to thank the board for allowing me and my peers the opportunity to speak tonight. To dive right in, one of my major concerns is the rising suicide cases, which are higher than COVID numbers in teenagers. To my knowledge, no one under the age of 20 has died of COVID in our state, but I do know that there have been a significant number of suicides. Even kids as young as sixth grade are making this choice. Louisville even had a principal take their life. It's not just the kids that are at stake right now. I am not scared of this virus. Anyone that knows me knows that, but I am scared to death of losing friends to an illness that has been here far longer. We have lost too much, we have learned so little in the past nine months that our motivation is down, our happiness is at all-time lows, and we are literally fighting to stay alive. We have been forced back to our homes for the second time this semester, trapped behind screens that we pretend to count as our daily dose of human interaction and education. I do understand and acknowledge the fact that for some students, online school is working, but for the vast majority, 75% of our district chose in-person learning in August, and here we are. I don't know how else to get you to listen to this. We have emailed, shown up, rallied, and even planned a district-wide sit-in. I want to see my teachers smile again. I want to see my teachers genuinely happy and not constantly worried that something will change or they will have to move their schedules around. We are here. We are screaming and yelling and making so much noise, but all we get in return is silence. I would like to share a quote from a video that I found last week that includes a poem written by an anonymous poet. It reads, "Tomorrow, I plan to say I have been busy when a teacher tells me that I have not been doing enough homework. In reality, I haven't been busy. I've been doing nothing, but I can't say that. I can't say my mental health isn't great right now and getting out of bed is really hard. I can't say I have no motivation right now and I'm finding it impossible to focus, even in class. I can't say my anxiety is through the roof right now and it drains me completely, so all I want to do is sleep." Because that reason isn't valid, because I just need to breathe and get on top of it, because I just need to get up and dedicate some time to it, because it makes me lazy, a bad student, giving up, a burnout. So I say, "I've been busy, I've been busy, I've been busy." A comment that I read under the video says, "I wake up every morning disappointed that I didn't just disappear, and I can't tell my friends that because I shouldn't think like that. I don't understand how you can hear stuff like this and decide that we're fine because we aren't. We aren't okay, we aren't learning, and arguably, we aren't that much safer at home. If I can work a seven-hour shift at a grocery store the day before Thanksgiving, I can sit in a desk and learn for seven hours. If the masks work, then let us go back to school. Thank you for letting me speak."
Thank you. Next up is Lauren Worley.
Good evening. My name is Lauren Worley, and I have three children in the Alathus School District, but I'm not here tonight to talk about my own children. Since the beginning of the pandemic and the subsequent school closures, there has been an issue weighing heavily on my heart, and that is the children in our community and in communities worldwide that do not have the ability to thrive or even stay afloat in a remote learning model. As a foster parent, I know firsthand the type of challenging home environments that many children in our community face. My fear from the beginning has been that these students, who are already at a disadvantage, would fall through the cracks when the stability of daily in-person learning was halted. In an article released by NPR recently, my fears are validated. The article initially seemed like good news. MAP scores have not dropped significantly during nationwide remote learning, but there is a caveat, I will quote from the article. Researchers dug into the demographics of this dataset, and what they found is that roughly a quarter of students were missing, meaning that they didn't take the MAP test this fall, and that these children are more likely to be black and brown, more likely to be from high-poverty schools, and more likely to have lower performance in the first place. That is incredibly alarming, and although there are, of course, a variety of reasons for these results, we cannot ignore them as a community. We need to be mindful of the long-term consequences remote learning will likely have on all members of the community. There are community members that you may not be hearing from. They might be too busy working multiple jobs, or maybe English is not their first language, or maybe they're struggling with basic daily functions due to addiction or mental illness. These are the families that I want to speak for tonight, because these kids, these kids need and deserve a voice, too. The educational gap will continue to grow for many of these kids the longer we stay out of in-person school. It's just common sense. The more support and resources you have at home, the better you are able to excel at schooling from home. Education is supposed to be the great equalizer, but if education continues from home, this cannot and will not be the case. I know everyone agrees, we all want kids in school as soon as it is safe. I understand the concerns, and I know you are all trying to make the best decisions for our students and community. I understand some teachers and staff are concerned for their health. We all are, but the rest of America has figured out how to return to work as safely as possible because it is necessary, and the more data we gather, the more we see these risks of in-person school are relatively low. The CDC director says there is extensive data that confirms K-12 schools can operate with face-to-face learning. They can do it safely and they can do it responsibly. He further states that it is not schools where students and teachers are acquiring COVID-19. It is at home and out in the community. So are there some risks? Yes, but the question is, do they outweigh the risks of not having in-person school? Is it greater than the risk of innumerable lives changed forever because certain populations of students cannot perform well in a remote setting? The grades they receive and the inevitable hopelessness they feel when they can't keep up will undoubtedly hinder their future education ambitions and therefore their lifetime career prospects. I know without a doubt that if there is any community in this country that can step up to the plate and safely provide equal education opportunities for all students during a pandemic, it is Alathus. I know tensions are high in our country and even in our own community, but I truly believe that we can all band together in our efforts to keep kids in the classroom. You need more subs? Okay, I personally applied last week for my emergency sub-license, and I know many parents who have done the same. Please know that whatever challenges in-person learning throws at you...
Excuse me, Ms. Worley. I'm sorry to cut you off, but your time's up.
Oh, thank you. We will help you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Mandy Freeling.
My name is Mandy Freeling, and I am a former teacher and a parent of a former student at Alathus Public Schools. I am here, I know you've heard a lot from both sides of the story today, so I'm going to try to take a little bit different approach. Today, I'd like to kind of focus on the strategic plan of the Alathus School District that you as a board and a school district have come together to design. One of the things that I noticed, first of all, when going through this plan is that on page four, it speaks of, "One of the important mindset shifts we are making within our organizational structure is putting student needs as the top priority in every decision we make and how we operate as an organization. And at each level of the organization, we must redirect our support to the frontline staff and students." So my question to you is, to kind of self-evaluate, obviously, is our students really at the forefront of your decision to not allow them into the schools? It also says that you're going to use this system. It's the embodiment of commitment to doing everything in your power to help students achieve success. Is that really happening? Are students really being successful? Are they excelling in the virtual classroom? I know my student wasn't. Um, sorry. One of the other things that I wanted to go through is the strategic framework, the goals that were set, and kind of address each one of those. Goal one is that we're having high academic expectations for all. Obviously, that's what we want for all of our students. Is that really what's happening? What is the data showing about how students are doing? Are they doing better? Are we excelling as a school? Is what we're doing currently making our students excel and be better? I don't think that's the general norm of what's happening right now. Students have spoken tonight. Some are successful, some can handle the virtual learning, and some just aren't. As a former teacher, there's students that learn in all different kinds of settings, and I just think we're dropping the ball when we're teaching all students. I just really want you to think about that. We want to make sure that they have... Goal two is behavioral and social emotional development for all. That's been brought up several times tonight about the social and emotional experiences of our kids. The lady just before me was explaining how some kids don't have a safe environment at home that they're learning in currently. School is a safe place. School is supposed to be a safe place where they can come and learn and be fed and be taken care of and loved on, and they're not getting those experiences right now. Not all of them, so... I just want us to really think about that. The suicide hotlines have increased by 47% from being at home and not being able to be around their peers and in schools. So I want you to think about, are we doing what's best for the behavioral and social development of all of our students? Goal three is human capital. The district will attract, develop, and engage and retain high-quality talent.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but that's three minutes.
Oh, wow, that was fast. Thank you.
Thank you. So that was our last public speaker. Just point out to the board that we did have one speaker that couldn't make it tonight, and they provided written comments that I think are at your desk. So we will move on to 3.01, Fiscal Year 2020 Audit Presentation.
Good evening. Tonight, we have with us Mike Lowry of Allen Gibson-Hulick. They performed the district's independent financial statement audit for the year that ended June 30, 2020, and tonight, he's going to provide you with an overview of the district's audit and walk you through their report, and also if you have any questions, we'll get those answered as well.
Good evening. Mike Lowry with Allen Gibson-Hulick. We were engaged to audit the financial statements of June 30, 2020, and the single audit in accordance with the Uniform Guidance. Before I get started, I'd just like to say a big thank you to Cassie and the entire finance staff and the program managers that were the federal expenditures. They were very well-prepared for the audit, considering the situation that we're dealing in, and they do that in addition to their normal daily duties, so we always appreciate that when the audit runs very smooth. The audit standards require that we communicate certain matters related about the audit to the governing body. This is a reminder, I always like to point out, that while we work with management to complete the audit, we work for the governing body. We do provide you with a formal communication letter, which I believe was distributed tonight. I won't cover that letter in detail, but I will hit the highlights for you. The audit standards require if we are to let the governing body know if the district adopted any new accounting standards in the current year, and the answer to that question is no, there were no new standards that the district adopted. There were technically supposed to be some standards, but those were postponed. The GASB, or the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, postponed implementation of that due to the COVID-19 situation, so they were postponed for another year. Believe it or not, not all the numbers in the district's financial statements are hard and fast numbers. There are what we call some significant accounting estimates in the financial statements. Those significant estimates relate to the other post-employment benefits, the net pension liability, compensated absences, and workers' compensation claim liability and health insurance claim liability. The district does have two other post-employment benefit plans, or OPEP, like we call them. One is provided for healthcare insurance for retired employees, and then the other OPEP plan is related to CAPERS, death and disability. The district does employ outside actuaries and specialists to help them develop those estimates, so we review the information that was provided to those actuaries to make sure that they received the right information from the district, and we concur with those OPEP liability estimates. The net pension liability is due to the district's participation in CAPERS Plan, and that information comes from CAPERS in Topeka. We review those reports, we make sure that, again, the CAPERS Plan was sent the right information from the district. As a basis for our conclusion, we review the CAPERS report for reasonableness and verify and recalculate the district's percentage of that net pension liability in the CAPERS Plan. On the compensated absences, we do review the reports from the payroll system and recalculate the compensated absence liability to ensure that that was done correctly by the district. We did have a few audit adjustments that we made to the trial balance that was presented to us for the audit. Those audit adjustments are really just to convert the district's accounting from the budgetary basis, which is what they operate on a day-to-day basis. So we convert that over to what we call GAAP basis for the financial reporting. Nothing unusual as far as audit adjustments go, really just a conversion process. Nothing unusual as far as audit adjustments go. Really just a conversion process. We did have one financial statement finding in our audit, and I'll put this in perspective for you. When you get findings from your auditors, they're in three classes. We have what we call controlled deficiencies, significant deficiencies, and material weakness. So they go up in severity from controlled deficiency, significant deficiency, material weakness. So controlled deficiency being the least severe, if you will. The audit standards require that we formally communicate significant deficiencies and material weaknesses to the board. The audit standards say that we really are only required to communicate controlled deficiencies verbally to management, but it is our firm's policy that we communicate all controlled deficiencies to the board. So you will have a description of that controlled deficiency in your letter, but I will kind of read an overview of what it is, and again, this is the least severe type of controlled deficiency. The district's purchasing card review and approval software system currently allows reports to be submitted to the wrong person for approval. We recommend that management continue their efforts to work with the software provider to ensure that the purchase card review and approval process is being performed by appropriate personnel. So we did find an instance where a P-card, it was reviewed and it was approved, but just by the wrong people according to the district's own policy, and that's what we're auditing. With that said, I always like to point out that there are three goals to any audit. Did the district comply with all laws and regulations? Were internal controls in place, but more importantly, did they work? And do the financial statements accurately reflect the books and records? And I'm glad to report this evening that the answer to all three of those questions, yes. With that said, we did issue what we call an unmodified opinion. That is the highest level of opinion that you can receive in a financial statement audit. It is our stamp of approval on the district's financial statement. Any questions before I move on to the single audit report?
Any questions?
I don't ever remember a conversion process to GAAP. Do we always do that, John Hutchison? He's nodding his head, but sorry to, I'm just, are you a new auditing firm, or is it?
Yes, we are new.
Okay, okay. And then, John, do we always have that conversion?
We always have because of our debt covenants with our bonds, mostly investing public once it's in GAAP basis. It's probably well before my time.
Okay. Okay.
It is completely standard. Most, it's not only school districts, but governmental entities, on a day-to-day basis, they account for stuff. The budget is what drives their accounting. They need to make sure that they're in line with the budget. So on a day-to-day basis, the accounting is done on a budgetary basis, and then when you do the financial statements, you have to convert that budgetary basis over to governmental, generally accepted accounting.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. And then the CAPERS piece that you reviewed-
Yes.
My understanding is we're just basically fed those numbers from the state level. Is that what you observed here?
Yes, yeah. That is how it works, and I will point out that that liability is really an actuarially determined liability, so it goes up and down every year depending on a few key factors, on how many employees participate in the CAPERS Plan, how well the investments in the CAPERS Plan does, that kind of thing. So that liability going up or down does not really represent a cash disbursement out the door from the district. It's really just an actuarially determined number.
Okay, yeah, and it doesn't even reflect our hiring decisions or anything. It's the state level, right? Is that what you observed?
When you mean it's state-
So it's the whole pot at the state level and then just kind of-
Yes. So it's the whole pot at the state level, and so what they do is they, they take how many employees USD 233 has in that pie, and you get a percentage of that liability, the statewide liability, yes.
Okay, okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, totally. Thank you.
All right. Moving on to the single audit report. Any non-federal entity that expends $750,000 in federal funds in a given year is subjected to a single audit, okay? So I will point out, it's not how much money you receive in a given year of federal funds, but it's how much of that money that you spend that triggers the single audit. And again, the trigger for that or the minimum threshold is $750,000. The district expended about $17.6 million in federal expenditures. Now, we are not required to audit the entire $17.6 million. We follow the federal guidelines, and we go through a risk assessment process on the different programs that the district has, and the district is considered what we call a low-risk auditee. So you can either fall into two buckets, low risk or high risk. The district falls into a low risk, and that is because they've done a, you know, a very good job of managing their federal expenditure. So nothing has triggered the district into a high risk. If you're a low-risk auditee, which the district is, the audit standards require that we audit a minimum of 20% of the federal expenditures. So this year, we, we picked, and, and once we pick a program, it's called a major program, so if I use the term major program, we picked Title I, Title II-A, and Head Start were the three programs that we audited. They represented $4.5 million of the total of $17.6, so it wasn't 20%, it was 25% that we, that we got to. We did not have any findings related to the federal expenditure in the single audit. And, you know, I never really like to gloss over that because when you look at what it takes to manage the spending of federal dollars with all the different compliance requirements, you really have to watch every dollar of a dollar and make sure that you're, you're in line and following the compliance requirement. So it's very rare that we have no findings in a single audit, so I'm happy to report that we had no findings in the single audit. And we did issue, again, an unmodified opinion on the single audit, which is the highest level of opinion that you can receive during a financial statement. With that, that's the single audit. Any questions?
Any questions?
That's a pretty big deal because the items you chose are pretty complex.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
So, good job, guys. Good job.
That's all I have.
All right.
Mr. Beveridge, if I could make a quick comment.
Okay.
I want to thank Mr. Hutchison and Ms. Osborne and her team. In 35 years in education, I don't know that I can recall an audit, particularly when we're talking about federal funds, with two unmodified opinions. So they've done an outstanding job. That, that is a very comprehensive process and audit, and when you think of the number of folks we have involved and, and the dollar amounts, they've done an incredible job based on these audit findings. And I just want to compliment them for, for that hard work and their stewardship of our tax dollars.
Yeah. Yes, thank you very much.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well done, yeah. Especially with the first year of an auditing firm coming in, that adds to it. Great job.
And now we are on to-
Mr. Beveridge, so Mr. Lowery can leave. Can we go ahead and do the 6.01?
I didn't realize you did the state for that.
Well, we were going to go ahead and take care of it all right now, so he can, so he can get out.
So we could just skip ahead to that?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. So if we could, if I could get a motion?
Move to approve item 6.01 as presented.
Second. Motion by Mr. Whitcliff, second by Mr. Geary.
Ms. Velter?
Yes.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
Mr. Whitcliff?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And now moving on to 3.02 Reopening Update.
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Allison looked at me, so it looks like I'm going to speak first tonight. Great. So as you know, everything is, is new for us as we embark on this school year and move forward in this school year, and one of the things that, you know, we've been talking about and working through a little bit is our configuration on remote and inclement weather days. I've said a couple times today, snow days, and Maggie's been quick to correct me and say, no, we're calling them remote and inclement weather days. So I'm trying to get that vocabulary correct in my mind as well, but I just want to give you a sense of what that will look like, should we get to that place this year. Being that it's 2020, I suspect we will be at that point sometime this year, but Clint and Sarah and Tim have done a really nice job in working with their administrators at each level to get feedback from our stakeholders across the building, trying to figure out a way to make these days meaningful for our students, but also trying to have some glimpse of, glimpse of a snow day opportunity, if you will, for our kids in ALATHA as well. So I just kind of want to give you a sense of what that will look like at each level, and also have you know that our principals are continuing to work with our staff and being prepared for these days should they happen, and those kinds of pieces. So at the high school level, should we have one of these kinds of snow days and inclement weather, a remote day, our high school students will be involved in, in, on remote learning essentially from 7:45 to 11 o'clock. And as you know, our high schools right now are running an odd-even block schedule, so whatever that day would be, either the odd or even would be the, the schedule that they would follow, and each of those class periods would be about 45 minutes. Again, our hope would be that our teachers would be providing meaningful instruction to the kids and interactive activities and those kinds of things during, during that time. Not completely unlike what our high school students were doing in hybrid learning in terms of a schedule. Our middle school students, like they're doing right now, they'd start their day in academic extension. They'd have about nine minutes to start their day in academic extension, where they'd have the opportunity to touch base with their academic extension teacher, and then they would have approximately 24 minutes in each of their class periods during the day as well, and that would be from 7:50 to 11:15. And then our height, or our elementary students would be looking at a schedule from about 8 o'clock to 11:15. During that time, they'd have academic activities and reading and math, but also have the opportunity to participate in special courses, art, music, PE, library, computer, whichever ones that they would have that day, and then also students who receive DLLs support, or Title I reading or mass support would get that support as well. The intent would be to provide that synchronous instruction during that AM time, and then also provide students asynchronous opportunities in the afternoon, things they could be doing at home independently by themselves, that kind of piece. So it's a quick rundown of what that would look like should we be in one of those places. You probably remember that in our hours for this year, we have about enough hours to have one kind of traditional snow day, so not a whole lot of flexibility in terms of doing that by, but by us doing this on our remote learning, inclement weather days will give us the opportunity to hold true to our calendar, spring break, the ending of the school year, and that sort of piece, too. And as someone said earlier tonight, not unlike other districts in our area, as they look at snow days, that will probably be the same. Can I answer any questions about that piece?
Dr. Yeager, real quick, one, I did get a knock on my door today, this morning, from my son, said that one of his friends texted him, wanted to know if we'd have a snow day tomorrow, so it's on the radar when it's snowing. Well played.
I can, I can answer that right now. No, no, no snow day.
The question I had was more along the lines of-
I've been telling my kids for years I don't know anything about when the snow day happens, and me talking about this time may change that for the rest of my life.
So let me, I just want to understand at the elementary level, we haven't done any remote learning elementary-wise yet this year, other than asynchronously. What is, would that plan then be the kids would be relied on using their own devices at home? Should they have them? What are our plans for kids that don't?
Yeah, thank you for, thank you for asking that question. So our elementary schools have done a great job of helping our teachers and our staff or our students prepare for that. So we're asking our students right now to take their devices home with them each day. So should we have something like this happen, we'd be ready to go. Even though they haven't done full remote at elementary, remember at the beginning of the year, we started in hybrid, and so there was that component where students, all elementary students, were doing a daily check-in with their teacher virtually. And so at some points this year, all of our students at elementary have interacted with their teachers via Zoom, online deck, kind of these pieces. And so there's some familiarity there, but as I said, Mr. Reeves also has worked with our principals to help our teachers remember to practice that, you know, should we need to be in a remote situation for whatever reason, that our students will be able to interface with their educators then.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
In the communication that went out about inclement weather and snow days, I think there was a little confusion. Is there a definition difference? I mean, is a, a snow day broader? Will you just answer that?
Yeah, so I think, and somebody will correct me if I'm wrong. Okay, John's going to let me go and then correct me if I'm wrong. I think the snow day is the traditional snow day, that if we would call a snow day, it would be a traditional snow day where we would essentially shut down the district, students wouldn't be on interacting with their staff members. If we would have an inclement weather, remote learning day, that's a day where students would interact with their staff members and, and be responsible for learning on that day. Did I get that right, Mr. Hutchison?
Okay, and so the staff members will be coming into the buildings, or they will be doing remote from home?
They would do, they would have the ability to do remote from home that day, and actually, in that situation, that would likely be our preference because if we have snow, we're going to need some time to clear our lots and get everything ready so people can come back to our buildings at some point.
Okay, and so I know we've done a concerted effort to make sure that all of our students have access to Wi-Fi and connectivity. Have we done similar to, do we know our teachers are, have this capability?
I may, where's Matt? Matt's shaking his head. Yes, we, we have, and, and I know we have a number of hotspots still available, so, so should we get to that place, we would certainly have hotspots available for our staff if you'd like.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, you bet.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Yeager. You know, as we've set aside this time at each board meeting, as we prepared for the school year, it was important to be able to, to roll out our, our plans and explanations and continue to do that, but at the same time, it, it also provides us an opportunity based on the questions we receive between board meetings and as, as things change at the county, state, or national level, an opportunity for us to, to address some of that. So I've got a number of items I'd like to, to walk through this evening. The first one is, is just to remind everyone that the, the decision on secondary to move to remote was based on the gating criteria predominantly, that we moved from yellow to orange, and in orange, it gives you the option of remote or hybrid, but remote is the direction you would go if all the secondary factors are not plateauing or trending on a downward decline. What we saw going from yellow to orange was, was a huge increase in cases per 100,000 in community spread, in our, we saw an increase in our student absenteeism compared to the previous year. And then you have to look at all the other secondary factors we have to consider, and one of those was staffing. As, as an earlier comment was made, that was our excuse to be able to go remote. We don't want to be in remote, but we have to look at, at all of those factors. So as we think about staffing, and I mean not only substitute teachers, but bus drivers, food service, paras, all our other support positions are critical for what we're able to do, but substitutes is one that we have talked about. We started talking about the concern back in May and June about what a pandemic might do to our staffing capabilities, and HR has worked since early in the fall as, as aggressively and progressively, in where we've advertised, how we've used social media, creative ways of analyzing all of our classified staff to see who met the requirements to get an emergency sub-license, and approaching them and helping them through that process. Looking at our student teachers as they complete their student teaching experience, we've, we've offered contracts. Now, that tends to happen at semester. We should have more available for us to be able to, to hire after we end semester. So we've looked at ways to try to increase our, our substitutes, same with food service and, and other support areas, because we knew this would be a, a critical juncture for us as we had to make decisions. Substitutes have been a, a struggle for school districts for the last several years at least, let alone during a pandemic. So that, that is an issue is, is not a surprise and something we've been talking about and, and working diligently to, to try to offset as much as we possibly can. There are a number of factors that complicate it this year, and heard comments on we need to streamline the process. So I want to talk about the process of becoming an emergency sub, because I, I don't think there's a, there's a lot of clarity, and it is complicated. State- State law requires school districts to have licensed staff in front of our students. So we have two choices. We can have someone that actually has a teaching license, or there's the process for an emergency sub-license, which grants a specific period, a number of days in which that they're allowed to sub. They are to be used only if you do not have a fully licensed teacher in place. And that requirement is set by the state. It is not a district choice. It's not as though somebody can volunteer and we're just going to put them in front of a classroom. That's not the appropriate thing to do, and none of us would want our students with just a volunteer in front of their classroom. So the state law requires to get an emergency sub certificate, you have to have had a minimum of 60 college hours. There is an application through KSDE that you must complete and pay the fee. You have to send official college transcripts for KSDE to certify that you have the 60 college hours. You must have your fingerprints taken, and this has become a slow point recently in individuals being able to get their fingerprints done, because many of the government agencies that would do that, like local police departments, because of the increase in community spread have shut down that operation and are not allowing folks into the lobbies. So our HR department worked to find several other entities that we're able to refer folks to. One of them is literally mobile to try to help get that portion of it expedited. Once the fingerprints are submitted, then there is a KBI background check, which must be completed, and in some cases, a TB test. All of those are state requirements that are controlled through KSDE. They are not Elate the requirements. We do not have any role in those other than helping guide folks through that process. All of it must be complete before the state will issue an emergency certificate. That process in years past could be anywhere from four to eight weeks, which is why we started pushing in the fall, trying to get subs, knowing that there is a lag. They have worked to try to reduce that, and we're hearing anywhere from 10 days to two weeks. KSDE is trying to turn those around. But all of those pieces have to be in place before we can put you into a classroom, or would want to put you into a classroom. From our end, our requirements are that you go to our website and complete an application. When you start the application and click that you are applying for a substitute application, it shrinks the application and the data information we're asking for significantly. It gives us enough to be able to get you into the computer system and those types of things. We then have an orientation where we can help make sure the payroll information, we talk about our security procedures, there's a number of things that someone needs to know before they're going to enter our building. And those are scheduled on an as-needed basis. Typically, HR tries to schedule those. When they know someone has applied for their emergency license, they try to get that within the week ahead of when they think they'll actually get their license. So that's what we require from a local. Everything else is at a state level. And oftentimes, it can be a cumbersome process, because if you haven't ordered transcripts in quite a while, to navigate that process, but HR helps. We have information available, they can't do it for you, but they are trying to help. So those are the requirements to become an emergency substitute. And let me get into the analytics of why what seems to be, if we can just get a few more people to become emergency subs, it solves the staffing issue. It's not as simple as that. So as an example, as we started this school year, we started with about 150 subs, less than we had the year before that had subbed for us. Many of those individuals were some of our more consistent substitutes because they were retired teachers. And given that they were at higher risk, they elected not to sub this year. So we started losing some of our more consistent pool. Then when you look at it, the numbers we need in it on an average daily basis for subs this year, I'll just use the last nine weeks an example, a low day has been 142 positions. We've had as high as almost 300 positions necessary. So you can see that even if we have five or 600 individuals that have, are in the system as substitutes, how many of those folks are subbing on a regular basis? And to give you an idea of what that looks like, the week of November 9th, we had 85 substitutes that worked all five days. So with our low being 142, and during that time period, our high of almost 290, 85 working every day, you can see how many positions are still open. Our instructional coaches, our coordinators, our principals, as you heard from a music teacher, subbing, all of those individuals trying to cover those positions. And we had during that time period, several days where we were able to cover about 75 of the positions. At the secondary, high school and middle school teachers were using plan and supervision time and covering various classes. That's not sustainable, it's not the best from an instructional standpoint, but that's just the logistics that are there. What complicates even more so this year is we currently have about 344 employees on leave. And that may be COVID leave, it could be family medical leave, it could be military, parental, all sorts. But those are positions, in most cases, whether they're certified or classified, we've got to try to backfill during that leave time. COVID has complicated it because it's for surgical or maternity, they're asking folks to quarantine prior to what they typically would. So now we have an extended period in which they're on leave, and then you add the COVID quarantines and exclusions, and instead of just a day, you have multiple days that we're trying to find substitutes for. So all of that is the perfect storm in trying to make sure that we have the appropriate staff in place. So community spread makes a huge difference, because our staff are part of the community. And even though we see a fairly low percentage of school spread, our staff are still being exposed in the community, and we're seeing that impact. So as we continue to work and make those decisions, none of them are easy. They are complicated when you start looking at all the pieces that are in play. We typically get to the holiday time period, and we'll have fewer individuals that have been consistently wanting to be a substitute. They'll do fewer days. So it's all those pieces that come together. Since we went secondary with remote, we've been able to reallocate those resources. We've got secondary assistant principals that are covering, elementary principalships that are principals that have had to quarantine. All of that has helped improve our fill rate, and this week, we've been in the, back into the 90%. So that was part of what we had to look at in being able to move forward. When those numbers and unfilled percentages increase, it's just not sustainable for us to continue to provide the instruction that we need to. So everyone has worked diligently to try to enhance that. I want to thank any of our community members that have heard this conversation over the last couple of months and have stepped up to try to help us out there. But again, if you're only able to sub a couple of days a month, that helps. But when you look at, you know, 85 individuals subbed all five days, the numbers you have to have, if everybody's just doing a day or two a month, becomes much, much larger than what we would currently see in interest. So those are just some of the aspects that come into play when we think about staffing. Then if you want to take that to the next level, as we look at our classified staff, you think of bus drivers. In hybrid, when we were able to combine some of those secondary routes, that's been the difference for us compared to some of the surrounding districts that have run into major problems with bus drivers and those types of things, because we were able to reduce the number of routes, and therefore DS Bus Lines was able to balance their drivers better. Same when it comes to custodians and our paras support for our students and those types of things. So that's the ongoing challenge we will have. It's not going to go away until community spread diminishes. When you listen to the CDC talk about what they predict for January, February, and March, you know, we'll just have to wait and see if things begin to moderate a little bit. A vaccine may help, but a vaccine, as we learned today, Kansas expects their first dosage to be around, dosages they receive somewhere around mid-December, about 24,000, and they've tiered, or at least talking about the tiers in who will receive that first group. The first group will be for the medical professionals, the front line, the hospitals. 24,000 does not cover all of those individuals. So then, the next tier, at least right now, and again, all of this is under discussion at the state level, would be your long-term care, nursing facilities, rehabilitation facilities, and the third tier are police, fire, and school staff. So it's probably February. Now, that all can change depending on how many of the vaccines get approved, how quickly dosages get out, but as of today, that's the message we got, is you can probably anticipate February being potentially when we get to that third tier and make that available. So while there's hope, as we look down the path a little bit, it's not like it's going to happen with the vaccine in the next two weeks. We're not going to come back from break and, you know, everybody's going to be able to get a vaccine. Be great if it could happen, but that's not what we're hearing. Let me address a little bit about quarantines. And the CDC put out this week some suggestions on reducing the time period for quarantines. We received word today from the commissioner that KDHE has adopted those and encouraged that the local counties utilize that, and that the Johnson County Department of Health intends to follow that guidance. So how does that guidance change things for us? As I talked about, those extended leaves and absences that we had to fill, exposed individuals who have no symptoms, and on day five or thereafter, have a negative PCR test, and that's not the rapid test, that's not the antigen test, if they have a negative result and have been asymptomatic, can return to work on the eighth day. So I think for a lot of folks, that will be a major benefit. We're currently in conversation with a couple labs regarding their capacity and some support from the state, and that we would hope to be able to provide PCR tests for our staff. So if there's an exposure and there's a need to quarantine, that we would be able to help provide that opportunity for them. As community spread has gone up, more people looking to get tested, we're back into a phase where it can be difficult to get a test, and even more so, the turnaround time has, for results, has stretched out to two, three, four days. The conversations we're having, we're working on a 24-hour turnaround. So still some pieces left to do, but that that would be available for any of our staff that needed to be tested. If someone chooses not to get tested and is asymptomatic, instead of 14 days, that exclusionary period would go down to 10. So there's four days there. And that's, of course, those that are asymptomatic. If you've had symptoms, then it's the 14 days and the negative test. So that may help us in a lot of different ways, both our families, our students, our staff, as they've reevaluated and looked at the data for quarantine. So more information, as we get the final clarification from Johnson County Department of Health and Environment, we'll be communicating that with our staff and our families. And I hope within the next day or two, then we'll also have our process in place and have been able to secure the testing. And more importantly, the lab turnaround of that 24 hours, I think could be a huge benefit for our staff as we move forward.
John, is this a good time for a question?
Yes, please, stop me anytime.
So if we have a teacher that is asymptomatic and could test on day five but chosen not to, I mean, can we have a policy requirement that they test, or?
Testing is voluntary, and there may be various reasons people don't want the test, but, you know, I think in conversations with our contact tracers and, you know, they're talking to those folks, I think that would be very rare. With the opportunity, the issue has been, can I get access to the test? And why they've elected not to get a test is by the time they can get the test and get the results, their quarantine is over.
Yeah.
So that's why they've elected not to. If we can provide an opportunity for them to do that, I think that'll be very, very rare.
I think most want to know and want to get back in the classroom. It's been my experience, but just hypothetically. And then, you know, with all of our medical expertise here, with our nursing staff, I mean, is there any future on the horizon where we could actually potentially do the swabs here and get them to the lab and shortcut it that way?
Yes, I mean, we, they, you know, like I said, with the 24-hour turnaround, we've had discussions with them on a courier service that they use, a way that we could collect in the district. So yes, they could be done onsite, or it's one of those situations where I've been told I've had, you know, exposure, I'm going to need to quarantine, and I can take the test with me. And then on that fifth day, and we can arrange to pick that up, they've got different ways in which they're working with groups. One of the particular labs were hoping that they'll be able to have, they believe they have the capacity to handle all the Johnson County school districts, with each of us looking at how we would approach that. We are part of a state pilot on the antigen test, and that's more limited. We've looked at some of our higher-risk staff that would like to be tested on a weekly basis, and we're almost to the point where we're going to begin that process. So, you know, as testing becomes more available, we're finding avenues where we may be able to do more of that, even get to a point that students could be tested if they wanted to volunteer for that. A large piece of that will be around the funding issue. Right now, that's taken care of through CARES and Spark Funding, but that ends at the end of December, and we'd have to see moving forward. But we're looking at all those options, and hopefully we'll be able to put together a combination that will help us moving forward.
Thank you.
Mr. Allison, can I ask you a question about the substitution piece?
Yep.
First, is there, do most subs, I'm assuming sub between districts, is that fairly correct, or are they pretty loyal to one, or I don't know?
I would say the majority of them tend to be, they'll predominantly sub in one school district, sometimes two, not much beyond that. The idea that sub may, you know, pick and choose between all the Johnson County school districts, as we've looked at the data, that doesn't seem to be accurate. The predominant factor seems to be if they were a teacher in that district, they tend to be very loyal to that district. If they have not been a staff member, tends to be more around how far they're willing to drive.
Okay.
So we, it's that radius of where they live to where they want to teach. Now, we've done a number of things to try to encourage our subs, we increased our sub pay this year. You know, Shelley and her team do a great job in the outreach they do for the individuals that substitute for us, just that personal touch. do for the, the individuals that substitute for us, just that personal touch. Um, you know, there's some other districts that are, that, that a couple of years ago went to, um, like Kelly Services and, and those types of things. And I think that's a lot of, um, a, a large part of the reason why we've been more successful in, um, in, in keeping our, our substitute numbers up and, and maintaining folks that, that want to work in our schools.
So, so my, my question would be that, I think you said most years were in the 90% you know, kind of typical day or, uh, or whatever there. We've gotten down into the low seventies.
Low seventies.
This, um, most recently. Is sustainability, I mean, are we able to, to run in the mid eighties pretty well? Do you feel, I mean, I know it's not ideal, but I'm just thinking about as we, as we go back in January, I know a few districts around us have said they're going to hold off till, you know, later in January. Do you think us getting, if we, if we, if our gating criteria said that we were able to get schools back open after, after the first of the year, um, do you see some, some people coming over to potentially help with that, that number, uh, shortage?
Y- y- yes. Um, you know, the, the efforts, uh, with our, um, with our district orientation, just in, in the last, uh, week, we've, we've been able to add almost 40 individuals. So if, if we can, can continue to, to add individuals that will sub on a fairly consistent basis, um, you know, in the meantime, we've, we've also worked with and, and sent communication to our staff saying, if you've got a, a college junior or senior, um, you know, again, nothing beats the, the licensed teacher that we have in a classroom, but, um, and have an interest, you know, we encourage them to look at, since many of them aren't going back to school until February, um, the, the possibility. And i- in that case, being able to utilize, um, some of, some of those students for, uh, paras and, and other positions we need to fill, um, I mean, we're, we're really trying to turn over every stone we can. So, um, I, I hope that our numbers will continue to, to increase. Again, the factor is community spread.
Yeah.
You know, as numbers jumped, we saw the number of folks willing to sub, um, and we've also had some of our substitutes that have been exposed and, and then head to quarantine. So it's, you know, it's, it's all entwined.
Yeah, thank you.
So, so are you seeing the numbers, um, come in, those applications for substitutes?
Well, like I said, you know, in the last week, we, um, through orientation, they've, they've been able to, they've had about 40, 40 folks.
Okay, that was the number you said earlier.
That's, that's pretty high. Um, you know, part of that is individuals that applied at the beginning of the month and they finally got all their paperwork in and the state's starting to process them. So we're, we're bringing them in for, for orientation. Um, we'll just, we'll just have to see how, how those numbers. You know, the problem is the numbers that are not subbing on a regular basis or elect not to sub, um, have so far outpaced the number of new folks that, that we can get interested in it, but, um, we'll, we'll continue to try. And like I said, our teachers have covered on plans and lunch periods, um, librarians have been covering classes, um, you know, all, all of that has a negative impact on the rest of the education. When, when the librarian's not available because they're having to cover that, that third grade classroom, um, then the library isn't available. And it, it, it all has, um, has impact and that, uh, we try to balance that as well.
Well, and I'd like to just say too, that, you know, plead to the community to, uh, encourage those applicants to come in and they get it in, because it sounds like the timeline is not short and it's not easy, uh, to get that through. It'd be an awesome, uh, awesome if we get enough people in the system to make that work, then when we do go full-time, full students in the buildings, that we have the personnel, substitute, whoever it may be, but help us out with that cause.
Yeah, like I said earlier, we, a, a year ago, we had, um, just, uh, just under 700 individuals that were listed in our, our, our substitute pool. Now, some of those folks never, never, um, worked a day, others might work a couple times a month, um, some worked, you know, e- every day. This year, we started the year down at least 150 out, out of that pool. And when you look at, um, you know, only 85, uh, worked all five days, um, that, that in the prior week, you know, it's, it, it does, um, just mathematically, it's, it's going to, it's going to take quite a few new additional folks for us to be able to, um, to offset.
Any other questions or did you have anything else, Mr. Allison?
I think that...
Okay. If no other questions, then we will move on to action consent. I know we have a question on at least one of these, so if we'd like to ask questions and then maybe lump them together after that.
I'd like to have a discussion on, uh, 4 dot zero nine.
Okay. I assume specifically on the remote.
Remote, yeah. Um, so district calendar for 2021, 22, um, and I, I think it's important to first talk about how the process of, how district calendars are developed. Um, Olathe has typically presented calendars almost two years ahead. So, um, we have a calendar for the next year and then we, we have a draft calendar for, um, for the following year. That's done, um, with a, 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 a large amount of input into those calendars. Um, you got to remember, we're, we've got to make sure that we're meeting the 1116 in the required state hours, um, that, that all of that, uh, is in place. Uh, we have a set calendar for the number of contractual days or, um, within the contract, a set number of contractual days with our certified staff. That's part of it. So it's teachers, administration, food service, transportation, um, with the various surveys that, that we do with our community. We have, um, community input, uh, we've had site council input in, in different ways. So all of that collaboration comes together for a school calendar. So, um, by Kansas statute, there are a couple mandatorily negotiable items and, um, those are, are part of the, um, change that occurred, um, in Topeka and that it, we must negotiate compensation and hours and amounts of work. After that, then it's, it's up to the two sides to, to determine what factors. So a calendar is a mandatorily negotiable, um, item. I think it's important to, to point that out, but it's built in collaboration and, and working toward consensus. So the, the 21, 22 district calendar, I think the question that has come up, um, is we took a, a little different approach in that we named remote learning days on the calendar. And when you look at this year, the previous year, and what's proposed here, and the number of student contact days, they're almost identical. So the, the calendar that's being proposed here, um, for high school students, and this is very typical, um, for Olathe, we have in, in the number of hours that they would attend, we, we have about six extra days beyond what the state requires. Now, because of the way they calculate hours, it's different from elementary to middle. Everybody's still got to meet the 1116, but it's, um, what counts and what doesn't, passing periods, the amount of lunch minutes you can count, recess minutes. So at the middle school, we, we have about nine extra days and at the elementary, about seven extra days in hours built in. So I know one of the comments I heard is you're, you're shortening their educational opportunities. Um, that's, when you look at, at, at those hours, they're, they're very similar. This year, if you'll remember, we had to redo the calendar because we front-loaded PD days to the beginning of the year and the late start so that our teachers had time to learn the LMS and, and to be prepared for exactly what's happened to us in that, um, we're going to have multiple learning formats during, during the school year. So, so that calendar looks a little bit different, but it contains 15 professional days. The 21, 22 calendar, including the remote learning days, is 15 days. So what we traditionally would have done, those remote learning days would have been professional development days and students would have not been engaged in any type of learning activity at all. And we felt with one-to-one, we have the opportunity now to utilize, um, and maybe the misnomer was calling them remote learning days, but to be able to provide a, a half day of instruction and the other half to be available for, um, for our staff and professional development. And why are the professional developments so critical? The contract day or, or the length of the, of the number of days in the teaching contracts in school districts has not changed for a long time. Yet the requirements and expectations in training and other aspects increases every single year. And if we were to take, um, those PD days, make them instructional days and add the amount, the number of days we need to be able to train, a, a day for all our certified staff to add to their, um, their contracts, because we are a large school district, is almost a million dollars a day. So this was a, a way in which we were able to, um, to, to work with our, our teachers and, um, that the other folks that helped, um, sit down and look at the calendar, to be able to provide the time, also give our students a learning opportunity for a portion of those days and meet the needs that, that we have. So just to give you an idea, these are the required state trainings we must do every year and why time is, is critical for us. So these are required every year in every district. Bloodborne pathogens, sexual harassment, bullying awareness, emergency safety interventions, um, suicide awareness and prevention. Um, depending on your position, that's also first aid, CPR, um, and concussion protocol. So those are, those are all required. That's before we ever get to a- anything else. Um, as you know, and it was mentioned by one of our, um, uh, folks in public comments tonight, talking about dyslexia. The state of Kansas, uh, in, in my editorial opinion, has been too long in, in doing so, has put some, um, expectations around training and that every school district have a structured literacy program, um, to support those students with dyslexia, that also in, includes a, a screening tool and all of that. Those requirements for this year and next year regarding dyslexia training have not changed. We've still got to, got to meet that time. So we looked at, at those days also helping us, um, critical. We've got a lot to be able to co- that we need to cover, um, and because we front-loaded those days to prepare, we don't have much time, as you look at this year's calendar, second semester, to work on that. Those are, the, the dyslexia component is, is, is an extensive training and our teachers are going to need time to work together to understand the structural literacy, how all those pieces come into play. Then you get into what we have in our strategic plan. When we talk about positive behavior supports and some of those other factors that, that we want to be able to move forward with, our staff need time and they need the training, they need the ability to digest it and to work with each other. So we really felt like the, the remote learning days really gave us a, a great option in that students were, were picking up a half-day of in- instruction and interaction with their teachers and it gave us the second half of those days to, to be able to, to continue to focus on, on some of these areas in, in addition. So, uh, for some reason, there seemed to be a, a concept that it was shortening the number of hours students were, were going to have, um, that these were free days, that staff, um, you know, almost days off for, for the second half. Now, they're going to be engaged in professional, because we need every minute we, we can get with it. So, um, I don't know if that helps kind of answer the questions and, and why that, that structure. Many school districts have gone to, because of this exact reason, they've gone to late start or, or, uh, early release days. Um, some of them, you know, almost every other week. And we've, we've had some ongoing discussions about that in the district, but we're, we're not prepared, uh, to move forward with that concept and we, we need to be able to engage our parents and our community as, as we think about that. But, um, we just felt with the new capability of the one-to-one, this was a good way to move forward.
Mr. Allison, are the remote learning days something that's going to move forward, um, for every ca- calendar going forward?
Don't know at this point in time. Um, we'll, we'll try them and if they're, if they're effective and accomplish the, the goals that we, um, that, that we've outlined here, then they'd be, of course, something we'd, we'd consider moving forward. And if, um, if it doesn't accomplish what we, what we want to accomplish, then, um, we'll look at a, we'll look at different options.
Are there, you, you mentioned some days that we, we have the same amount of professional days and all that. Is there some, some cost savings that we have? Now, I mean, I would imagine that not having some teacher, I mean, is there some cost savings that we can, that we recognize through some of the, uh, remote learning days that we have?
Um, the, not directly just because of the remote, but if we were to, to add that time, if we were to, to add it to the contract or to, to pay staff for, um, professional development, um, after contract hours or weekends, that becomes a significant cost. So in, in that case, when we're able to do it within the, the confines of the contract and the calendar, um, that's definitely the, the most cost-efficient for us.
Thank you.
Are you hearing from teachers that have children in the school district, how this will work for them? If they have a child that needs to be remote part of the day and then, um, professional development the second half, are we getting feedback on how that will work for our teachers that are parents also?
You know, since the, the, the teachers in, in professional council were involved in, in development of this, the teachers have already ratified this calendar. Um, so, uh, and, um, did not hear a, a negative. Teachers, um, are, are used to with professional development days, that's a whole day and that they have to make arrangements for, for their, their own children on, on those days. Um, so no, I, I really didn't hear, um, any comment regarding that, that change.
Okay. And just for clarification, PD is professional development and then one-to-one is one device for every student.
Correct.
And that's what, that's what's new here, right?
Yes.
Because all of elementary, all 36 elementaries, we had intentionally done two-to-one, two students to one device. And the reason we did that is that we didn't want to create zombies, you know, that didn't know how to interact socially. And then here comes the pandemic and all of a sudden we're like, oh, okay, shifting plans. And so now that we have this capability, this is an option that will get us additional training and all the lists that you gave us, that's state mandated. So there's, the beautiful thing about school districts is we have local control. So the way we do what we do is nuanced. So it's the Olathe way or it's what they used to call it when I first came on the board. And so anything that we want to layer on top of that training is additional, right? And so it comes at an expense. So if this is a nice meeting of the minds where we have negotiated that this will work, I think perhaps the perception is the word remote, which is tainted, to say the least, um, left people with a bad taste in their mouth is kind of my take on it. But I would encourage everybody to, first of all, realize this is one year that we are approving, if we, if we so approve, and that this isn't, that we're trying to shift the way that Olathe Public Schools does school. We have no intention ever to go fully remote all the time. It would benefit no one. So this is a way for us to accomplish our professional development and also have some learning hours during the day, if, if I may add my little personal take on it. So I'll be voting to support this because I think, kudos to everyone involved, I think it's a great creative way to meet everyone's needs now that we have one-to-one devices.
And to Mr. Boyd's question, as, as you stated, this is one year. We'll, we'll take a look at, at how well, um, this works. Again, does it, does it accomplish the, the goals that we set out? And if it doesn't, we'll begin to look at other options. And, and that's the, the nice part about year-to-year on, on the calendar is we are able to, to, um, to make those changes. One other, uh, why I think of it, um, one other aspect that's different in this calendar is you'll notice that, uh, there's no school the week of Thanksgiving, instead of we traditionally... of, we traditionally would do that Monday and Tuesday. That was at the very top of the parent survey feedback we got a little over a year ago. Um, parents uh, wanting to know if it was possible to, to do that week, um, so we, we tried to build that in and um, and, you know, and anytime you, you, you add, you have to subtract in, in different areas, but that's, that is the other, um, the other change to this compared to our traditional calendars. Uh, other than those two areas, it's um, it's very similar to, to the calendar that we're all, all familiar with.
So we're still not giving Good Friday off, huh? That's like a big request, and then that's our, I think, number one unplanned substitute request day also, if, if statistics hold true. So I'll put that out there. I, I would love to see that added to a, a day off for everyone.
Any other questions? I had one question, Mr. Allison, on um, internet connections, so I know we're helping some families with internet connections, is that gonna be something that we will explore continuing for next year because of this, or how will that work?
You know, we'll have to analyze it at that point in time. Um, I, I know that there are intent is this spring to, to kind of go back and, and check again to see where our families are, particularly those that didn't have internet access, has, has that changed in some way? And um, you know, that's, that's always a consideration, we're gonna, we're gonna have to figure out ways in which to support our, our students that don't have that access.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion to, I guess lump all nine of those together.
I would move to approve uh, action items consent, uh, four dot zero one, four dot zero nine is presented here this evening.
Second.
A motion by Mr. McCune and a second by Mr. Whitcliff.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
Mr. Whitcliff?
Yes.
All right. And moving on to action bids, contracts, and agreements, five point zero one to five point one zero. Does anyone have any questions on those? And if not, I would entertain a motion.
Move to approve items five dot zero one through five dot one zero is presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Whitcliff, a second by, was it Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
Mr. Whitcliff?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
All right. On to um, action other, we've already voted on six point zero one. Does anyone have any questions for staff on six point zero two regarding sanitary sewer easement? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I would move to approve. Six dot zero two is presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McCune, second by Mr. Geary.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
Mr. Whitcliff?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
All right. And then moving along on the agenda, we have uh, future action items, seven point zero one through seven point zero six for us to look at for next month or future months, and also written in informational, written, we have uh, the Head Start Directors Report and Parent Teacher Conference Totals that are in there for you to all look at. So now we're moving on to nine point zero one, does anyone have any board comments they'd like to share?
I, I had a couple things. First of all, I, I noticed on the HR addendum that uh, uh, Mr. Mason is resigning, I think I saw him here, and I just wanted to say thank you to him for all of his service to the uh, to the school district that you provided for many years you've been here, and I know you're taking on some other things and will be doing other things, you'll be around, I'm sure, but uh, just wanna say thank you, because I know you're coming to an end here at this uh, end of the semester, so thank you for all you've done for us in the uh, legal side of things.
Thanks, Pat.
I also wanted to uh, to say uh, can, thank you, congratulations, all the above, to starting with uh, Mr. Brady and all the coaches and ADs and sponsors uh, within the fall activities, uh, you know, we, we quote-unquote made it through. I know there were some state champions that we hopefully will recognize uh, later on in, in different meetings and things like that. I just wanna say um, thank you to all the, the participants and it's, again, everybody that was involved in, in all the, all of those things, whether it be um, having to do things remotely, having to quarantine, having to do different things, but most of all um, getting through. So kudos to all those that were involved in all those activities throughout the, the fall, and I, I, I hope winter becomes the same and um, and lastly, and I don't know, I, I had seen email right before we started, uh, Mr. Allison, you might wanna chime in on this a little bit, I saw that the school foundation um, is uh, is covering the costs of some of the remote viewing of some of the sports. And so I, I know I got an email about that from uh, the high school that my kid attends, that the foundation is covering some of that, uh, related to NFHS, so um, thank you to the school foundation for helping out some of the parents on, on that. Hopefully that's still, that's correct on that.
That, that's correct. If, if you remember at the last board meeting, you approved um, uh, our, our participation in putting in cameras in our, our gymnasiums, um, and Summit Trail Pool, which is our primary competition pool, um, and the foundation with uh, Caish's decision to, to limit um, spectators for at least the next month um, at, at those events, uh, that, that is a subscription service, and the foundation has received some donations that will uh, allow us to cover that cost, so that there'll be um, a, a login per, per athlete or participant uh, family, and that they'll be able to, to watch at no charge um, for at least the next month, uh, as their, um, as their child participates in, in whatever activity that, that may be. So we're, we are very thankful to, to the foundation and that should be uh, it should be a help to many of our families during that time period where we're not, not allowed to have spectators.
And the, and the last thing I wanna mention is that I know that we had set specific dates related to our gating criteria measurements, and I know it, we didn't talk about it earlier, but I believe our next one is December?
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth for our next measurement, so I just wanna remind community people that that's when our next measurement date for the start of, of the second semester will be correct, and, and uh, so kind of how measurements in our gating criteria come out, that's, that's when the measurement date will be, so I just wanted to kind of put that reminder out there that, you know, it's not, we're not, those of you who are waiting for a decision today on that, that's not something that we're, we're deciding today, but something that will be measured as our, our calendar has always been, been made, so that's all I got, sorry.
Anyone else?
I just wanted to give a quick shout-out to Principal Slider at Indian Creek Elementary. I had the opportunity to attend a virtual assembly there, and I am, I don't know why, but I continually to be amazed by how awesome and professional her and her staff are, and they, to see them buy into and embrace um, this remote assembly, um, it was just special. And you know, my kid got an award, so that was cherry on top, but you know, they, they did a really great job, and uh, so kudos to Principal Slider and all her team at Indian Creek.
Great. Thank you. It looked like we had had something.
Yeah. So John, I, I meant, I should've asked this question before about, we've had several people men- mentioned the data and ask it, ask why it doesn't include teacher absenteeism. Could we talk a little bit about that?
Um, sure. We, we've included staff data um, on the, the dashboard, but that has not been included in any of the gating criterias that, that have been proposed or that we looked at. It, it, it comes down to that secondary um, consideration in, in many of them on your ability to, to appropriately um, provide staff to, to hold school. So it's uh, and, and that may change, where, as they look at, you know, continue to um, the, the county continues to look at their gating criteria, KDHE will, will monitor that, but it's, it, at this point in time, that, that hasn't been a, a portion of um, of what we've seen so far.
And, and do you know of any districts that have that as an element? I, I'm not aware of any, but I'm putting you on the spot, have you heard of any that have added that?
Not, not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Okay. And then um, one other thing I meant to address is, uh, we're hearing about grades are taking a hit during this time, and we're aware of that, right? And working on solutions, right?
Yeah, that, the, um, our teachers and our principals, uh, as they've, they've monitored the grades, um, looked at uh, at students that aren't participating, um, what those, those grades look like, and have continued to try to have come up with um, creative ways to um, provide intervention and help for those students. Um, y- you know, and, and for our teachers, they're, they're used to a particular grading system, and many of them looked at, at um, how that was performing, whether it was in remote or, or hybrid, and are making adjustments. So um, yeah, it's, it's been an ongoing um, area that uh, that our schools have monitored and had conversations about and will continue to um, be a focus.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else? If not, superintendent, any more comments?
Mr. Geary took almost all of my comments, so that, that worked out well. Uh, no, the, i- i- you've heard enough from me this evening, but I, I do wanna thank um, Mr. Mason for over twenty years of, of service to the district, um, both uh, a- as an employee, as, as a parent, a great advocate for um, Olathe Public Schools, and uh, we will, we regret that he's leaving us, but um, completely understand that he's ready to take on some, some new challenges, uh, and wish him well in um, his business pursuits as he moves forward.
All right. We do not have an executive session, is that still correct?
No, sir.
All right. So, meeting is adjourned.